Hello, and welcome to the Wakefield School Committee Meeting of July 30th, 2024. We are meeting on Zoom this evening as this is a rescheduled School Committee Meeting, and WCAT was booked up for the evening. Seems like they're getting increasingly popular, so that's good for them. As is normal, we will open the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. So I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And item number three would be our reading of the mission statement. "The vision of the Wakefield Public Schools is to graduate students who are confident lifelong learners, who are respectful and caring members of their community. Our mission is to prepare students for college, career, and community by providing rich and challenging curriculum, high-quality instruction, and educational experiences that meet their individual needs and interests." The next part of our meeting is public comment, and I think we have at least one person here for public comment. Ms. Cummings?
Hello.
Hello.
Hi, everyone. I hope you're all doing well and having a great summer. It's good to see you. To officially announce myself, I'm Jess Cummings, President of the Wakefield Education Association. I won't be here long, I promise. Just a few brief comments and a request. First, I would like to mention that the Union has been at work this summer, like many others. The other officers and myself have been prepping for the start of the year, and we've also met with Superintendent Lyons and Assistant Superintendent Morrow a few times now in various combinations. I would like to thank Superintendent Lyons and Assistant Superintendent Morrow for these meetings and for the conversations that ensued. I do believe that we're collectively trying to manage some things from the end of the year, and also some things that are important for the start of this coming year. So thank you both very much for your time for the past month and a half-ish. Secondly, back in May, I began a very short email chain with the members of the School Committee. Chairperson Ingles, you had responded on behalf of the Committee, to which I did further respond. That email of mine concluded with a request. That request has gone unanswered since June 4th. The request was an attempt to bridge communication gaps between our two groups, and I will present that request here again as well. I am requesting that the Union have participation at these meetings, a participation that's similar in style to what has been afforded to our students. We all love to see our students here, on here, in the studio, summarizing student life and answering questions when they're asked. It has resulted in wonderful back and forth that I'm sure allows you to all feel closer to our student body. I love it. I think it is great, and I would only imagine that you would like to have a similar experience with Union representation, which is, of course, different from other administrators and other select teachers and staff coming to these meetings to give particular presentations. Also, meeting and discussing things with Union representation is equally as important as those presentations are, because, of course, those are important as well. Please know that I'm not looking to upend these meetings or make them any longer for the people here. Also, we do have a grievance process, so I know that this would not be the place for that. I do ask that you further consider this, and also additionally, to have a conversation with us about it, about what that could potentially look like and how it could benefit both groups as well as the community at large. I look forward to your response to my second request. And lastly, I would like the community to know that the Union is planning to have our own community Zooms that will be opened up to the public. Right now, we're projecting three, four next school year. We'd like to do one in the fall, one in the winter, and one in the spring, and this would be a space for Union officers to discuss important topics, whatever is pertinent at that time, and also answer any questions that people might have. Definitely, I'm very excited about implementing this new practice, as the Union is typically so limited in its exposure to the public, yet we are the most hands-on with the students of Wakefield. We will be in communication with PTOs around the district, and we'll be posting on our social media pages once school gets started to put out more details on dates and times. Don't worry, we won't schedule them to conflict with district, community Zooms. We won't be looking to compete for viewership when it comes to that. So that is all I have for us tonight. Thank you very much for your time. Have a great meeting, guys.
Thank you so much. Appreciate all the work that everyone is putting in during sort of the offseason, as it were. Thank you. WCAT, I don't think we have anyone else for public participation?
I don't think so, no.
Okay. Thank you so much. Moving on will be our consent agenda, and I believe we have a motion.
Is this for the approval of the minutes?
Yes.
All right, let's try this. I moved, we moved that the School Committee approved the minutes of the June 25th, 2024 School Committee Meeting, and the minutes of the July 20th, 2024 School Committee Annual Retreat and Goal Setting Workshop, and acceptance of the minutes of July 9th, 2024 School Committee Student Services Subcommittee Meeting, and the minutes of July 11th, 2024 School Committee Policy and Communication Subcommittee Meeting as presented.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. We do not have Judy here this evening. I should also say, we also do not have Committee Member Markham with us this evening. But so with Judy in absence, I believe I could take a roll call vote, seeing as we are on Zoom. So I'd start off with Dr. Piscadlo?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Fontanella? We'll come back. Pete?
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Oh, thank you, Kevin. Ms. Collaren?
Yes.
Thank you. And Ms. Quinn?
Yes.
Yeah, I got everyone. All right, that's unanimous. Thank you. Moving on to item number six, Superintendent's remarks.
Thank you very much. With your permission, Mr. Ingles, I'd love to take the kind of items out of order so that Estelle and Bev can talk about summer programming, and that way they can get on with their evening, because I know that they're, they're still working, so they're up and early, up and out early to accommodate students, so.
Absolutely.
Sam, can Estelle get the slide deck or in?
Yep. I have it. Hey, did that come up okay?
It did.
Great. I just wanted to talk about Wakefield Academy's summer programming, and Bev is joining me to talk about her amazing ESY program as well. We'll be sharing the slide deck on that. Thank you so much for inviting us here to speak to our summer programming. It's, it's quite, quite a feat to accomplish over five and six weeks, so I'll get right into it. Our first piece is our summer opportunities. We have, our Wakefield Academy offers three programs for our kiddos to enjoy, which is our Summer Warriors Academic Program, which runs in the mornings, eight to 12. That is our rising first grade to rising sixth grade, and they get to take part in lots of academic activities. We also have our summer camp, which is our rising K to fives, and parents are able to take advantage of our either half-day morning, half-day afternoon, or full day, and that program runs 7:30 to 5:00. So it gives parents a full-day coverage. We also have our pre-K, pre-K summer camp, which again runs half-day mornings and half-day afternoons or full day. So again, that covers our 7:30 to 5:00. And then we also have our last piece, which is our enrichment program, which runs full week, one to three or one to four, depending on which enrichment you choose. Our Summer Warriors program is focused on our four major areas of academic learning, which is our reading, writing, math, and our amazing hands-on science, which is brought to us by Wicked Cool Science. We also have, our EL students receive extra time with our EL educators, so they get that extra dose over the summer, which puts them in a great spot for our September starting school year. Transportation is also provided for our Boston students and our EL students, so everybody has an opportunity to join us and be part of the community. We also serve 100 WPS students, rising grades first through sixth, as I mentioned. Our instructional staff consists of nine classroom teachers. We had two classrooms with co-teachers this year, so that made for a really great experience for our kiddos, and we have seven ISPs to support those classrooms, as well as the three EL teachers to support our EL students. Here's an example of our schedule. We have our morning, which starts our ELA block, and then we have our math block, and then we have a generous free play recess time, which is our social-emotional time for our kiddos to get to play with each other and make friends across the district, and it's a great experience for those students to, you know, if they may be new to the district, they get to make some new friends before they head into their school year. And then our last block, which is the most sought-after, is our science hands-on block, which includes our mass state standards of earth science, chemistry, and engineering. Our little ones absolutely adore that block. They thoroughly have a great time with it. One student I was walking up was mentioning how they got to make a volcano and take it home, so all of these experiences, they get to actually take home and show their families what they've been doing for the day. Here are some highlights of our little kiddos in the classroom. As you can see, they're all smiling faces, which is quite a feat for a summer morning starting at eight. As one of the students complained, it starts a little too early, but I said, to get all that fun in, you guys start early. Our WOW K to four and pre-K camps offer themed weeks in a fun and safe environment where our campers can participate in our traditional camp-style activities. So there's the, the old go-tos of tie-dying, arts and crafts, relay races, team sports, et cetera. But we also throw in there some great outside programming that comes in, which is our petting zoo. We had a wonderful circus workshop. Host come in last week and taught our kiddos how to do some of the circus tricks, and we had some drumming show, and we had our Kona ice truck just last week, which was a great fun time for the kids to get a little sweet treat. And that includes our academic students as well, and our other students participating in our programs, including our enrichment, got to sample that treat, so. Our, each activity is designed to bring the most to our campers in the summer, so they experience really in-depth social and emotional and interpersonal skills as they play and enjoy their time together. Our parents can choose from the AM, PM, or all-day camp, as I mentioned, and our ratio of staff is a one to four, which really ensures safety and proper supervision at all times, given the fast-moving schedule that we have. We serve, on average, 135 pre-K to five, grade-five students per day. And here's some highlights for our camp. So they had a great time. This week is space, so they made little planets down here, and lots of smiling faces there. Here's a sample camp schedule that our children get to enjoy. It just gives you a little insight into all the activities that they get to take place, take part in, and enjoy while they're with us. And as you can see by the schedule, keeps them hopping. So by the time their parents pick up, they're thoroughly exhausted and ready to, to settle in for the evening. Our enrichment opportunities, those are our outside programs, vendors that come in and provide week-long camps, basically abbreviated ones, where students who are either part of our camp or are not part of our camp get to take place, take part in these programs so that they get a little extra dose of some fun in the summer with us. And you do not, as I mentioned, have to be a camp member in order to take advantage of these activities. And that gives approximately 40 students or so each week. Take advantage of that opportunity. Our WOW pre-K program is run in collaboration with our Extended School Year program. Bev and I work very close together with this, so our little pre-K students, our tiniest ones, get to enjoy a classroom experience curriculum-based in the morning, and then if they choose, they can also take advantage of the opportunity of taking part in our pre-K camp in the afternoon, which runs from 12 to 5:00. And here's our littlest ones. Look at those faces. You just can't resist them. They're so cute. Oh, we have some digging for gold, and the one jumping around, we had a pirate ship blow up, jumping thing that they got to take part in, and I have to say, that was a huge hit. And our Wakefield Academy staffing, we could not do it without them. Our amazing staff is unbelievable in their dedication to our kids. We start this process back in February, interviewing new staff members and, you know, vetting our current staff for who wants to take part in the summer program. Summer is a whole other beast, so you really have to bring your energy game to it. Then we kick it off with a Wakefield Academy orientation meeting, where we present to our staff all things WOW Camp and the protocols that are expected to be followed, so that our staff understand their responsibilities and their commitment for the safety and well-being of our children. All staff, including the academic and our ISPs, attend this orientation session, and they all need to sign off to make sure that they understand what the expectation is. The slide presentation is a great tool to use during the six weeks, as we have a lot of young staff with our high school helpers. We even have junior volunteers, and that took part in this orientation, and our college assistants also, who are either coming back and need a little refresher as to what the expectations are. So it really helps to drive home, you know, what their mission is and what their goal is this summer. Our camp staff consists of 105 teacher adult leaders, college assistants, high school helpers, and as I mentioned, our junior volunteers, which are our little ones, they're around 12 years old or so, and they love to be in a grown-up role of having a job. Here's a sample of our training slides, so we talk about what the responsibilities are for our team leads, our camper engagement, what's expected of them, most importantly, our confidentiality, and any injured or sick child protocol that they need to follow. Here's a sample of our staffing schedule. As you can see, we break it up by grade-level groups. These groups are then led by a team lead, and then the support staff that go with it. We also have one-to-one assignments. Those are for our students who need that extra care, and then we have duties and enrichment support, so everybody's covered. Our ESY, my Wakefield Academy program, in collaboration with the ESY program, share a few things in particular, and that is, we share our medical care, which is, we have our amazing Wakefield Academy nurse, if I might say so, Megan Hoffman, who jumps in and takes care of all the youngsters in the ESY and WOW programs. And then we have our junior volunteers. We have a couple of students that come direct from the ESY program and volunteer in our program camp-style, and they are actually enjoying themselves thoroughly, and they are amazing in their roles. There have been opportunities where we've given them added responsibilities, and they've taken it and run with it, and thoroughly enjoy their time, and they really have a great time with us, and will be the first ones to say, I can only stay till 4:30 today. Is that okay? I'm like, we close at 5:00, and you're volunteering. You're absolutely fine. So it's super cute. We also do a bridge to our Extended School Year program, where we cover the morning part, because the, most of the classes don't start until 9:00 a.m., so we allow parents to drop off with us at 7:30, and that way, we then make sure that they transition into their ESY program successfully every morning. And we also have students that join us, either for our academic program or our camp, and they are also on the list for getting that extra boost over the summer for their tutoring, and we work collaboratively to make sure that that takes place seamlessly. I'm going to hand it off to Bev Beverley, who can now speak to her amazing program.
Well, thank you, Estelle. You are a tough act to follow. I will do my best.
Hardly.
We have the ESY program, which houses, this year, it's 505 students. 429 of them attended the Galvin School, and 76 attend the Doyle School. And at the Doyle School, we also have a nurse there during the whole, the morning program. Our areas, we provide, we provide reading, writing, and math to all our students in the full program, to break, break up the students' schedules. We offer STEM, arts and crafts, or physical education once, once a day. The reason we do this is it allows the students to have fun review, while reviewing their academics. We also provide tutoring in reading, writing, and math for students who only need part of a program to, and that's determined by the, during the school year, the MSN, the special ed teachers, and the students, we see who needs to, to go for tutoring as opposed to the full program. Our program runs from 9:00 to 12:00 through Monday and Thursday, from July 8th to August 8th. Tutoring is usually offered two times 45 weekly for the duration of the program. We provide speech, occupational therapy, and physical therapy. We also provide tutoring to the Wakefield Academy students. As she provides services for our students, we provide tutoring for her students. It all works out very well. It's very beneficial, the partnership between Estelle and myself. We also have a small pre-vocational program for a few older students from 12 to 12, and it's, it's the after-school program that ends at 12:00. The students clean up the area. We do recycling, we do the trash, we sweep the classrooms, and then we take care of our garden that we have outside. Both of the teachers and the paraprofessionals are from the Wakefield School Department and know many of our students before they even enter the summer program. The summer helpers have been very successful through the, through the years in our ESY program, because they have been introduced, many of them, into education. Some of these helpers have become current Wakefield teachers. Our staff is very dedicated to the students that they work for, and usually return to our program each and every summer. The program seems to be getting larger, and we end up getting new staff, but they do like coming back. We also, I forgot to mention, we also have a large number of ELL students in our program, the ESY, the full-time program, 9 to 12. I don't know if you have any questions. I'd be happy to answer them. We start, we start getting, the ASY program, we start in January. That's how big it is, that we have to really start to plan in January to make sure that we have everything in place for the students before summer starts. Here's a few pitches of some of the fun that we do have. We just found that, once we added the enrichment a few years back, that the students' attendance is much better, that they're not just doing reading, writing, and math. We don't want them to feel punished, because they need to go to prevent the regression of their academics, so offering these, this year has been a big hit. We have arts and craft, we have STEM, we have in-person STEM, we have Zoom STEM, we have PE, we even have a former worker who came and did a internship, and it seems to be a real big hit for STEM. It was all hands-on, and today, I was listening to all the reviews, and he captivated the students, it was unbelievable. So we're growing, just like Estelle's growing, and luckily, I have Estelle to bounce things off of, and she bounces things off for us, and it, the collaboration really makes it successful. Any questions?
That was great. Thank, thank you so much. Thank you to both of you. Does anyone have questions for, for Bev, for Estelle? Dr. Lyons?
Not a question. I was wondering, Bev, can, can you share, you, you alluded to the program has grown. Can you share how much it's grown in the past few years?
Yeah, since after the epidemic, it seems that each year, we seem to go up like 50 students, but this year, it seems like we, we took a big jump, and I don't know why. It's not my job to find out, but there just seems to be an awful lot of, the ESY has really, really grown, and I, it might, I, I, I don't know why, but it, it has. I'd like to think that the success, the success of the programs, that's, that's why people don't mind coming for their academics, and they can still go to Estelle's for the afternoon for the enrichment. So I'm hoping that that's what it is, because a lot of the students, the parents like them to be busy, but they also don't want them to lose out on their academics. So I think more people are attending now, because they realize that they can do the academics in the morning, and then at 12 o'clock, they can go have lunch with Estelle and do all her enrichment and other programs, and it also, I think, is very, very helpful to parents that need childcare.
I, I think you both have been very creative at not only building enrollment, but also kind of keeping kids coming back, and I think that the program has fundamentally changed, as you talked about.
Yeah.
I want to thank the both of you for really doing a great job for our kids. It really makes a difference.
It's, it's fun. It's, I, I, it is hard work, I will tell you that, but when you see the smiles on the, on the students' faces, when you see them asking when we're going to do it next year, the attendance, some of them don't even want to go on vacation, but it's so that you, you know you're doing a good job when you get feedback from the students, not the parents, but the students. And, and we do have a lot of support for the students that need one-on-one. I think that's changed, too. There were students that, that before didn't come, because they went to other programs, and now we have them coming to Wakefield, because we can provide the support, and we can provide the extended care. So I think that makes a big difference in the enrollment also.
I love how we've diversified this program to include EL students and summer enrichment.
Yeah. They are very, very good. Kara has done a nice job with them.
Kevin, did, did you have a question? Or a comment?
Yeah, so I want to commend both of you for, obviously, the, the attendance numbers that you guys have definitely speaks to the success of the program, so obviously, you know, the demand is there, and you guys are meeting it. One thing I wanted to ask, and I, and I don't want to throw the, who of you on the spot, because you, you might not know, could ask Doug to care of this. I'm wondering if we've looked at iReady data to actually see if there's been a growth in academic improvement because of the participation in because of the participation in this program? If we can actually look at people that have participated in this program versus kids that have not participated? And maybe seeing a little bump, especially in the beginning of the year scores when they're taking in September? I thought that might be something useful to look. Obviously, the attendance numbers is great and childcare is so important in the summer. But it would be useful to know there's some academic outcomes that are coming out of this as well.
I, I can only speak from my class. I have a compass class at the middle school. And I had 17 students last year and I did go by the iReady scores because it did help me to write goals and objectives and to see who should attend for the summer. And I will tell you that the, the reading programs that we have here with the teachers that we have that really invested in iReady and other programs like that, my numbers have jumped. And the ones that opted not to come, when we do it again in September, I'm going to see that there was a loss from June to September. The ones that, and it's interesting because the ones that struggle the most are the ones that want to come in the summer because they see that their scores have gone up and the parents have seen it's gone up. So they come and they give us less trouble coming. In fact, if there's an opportunity for them to do extra reading with the younger classes, they will. Because I have the middle school, which is grades five to eight. And so if we can sweeten the deal by saying, if you come to school and you do some reading and you do some math, then we'll find you some volunteer positions with the younger kids. And they go in there and they read because they have the confidence. But I can only speak to my particular class and it definitely has shown a real difference in their iReady scores.
Yeah, I can, I can just add to that. I think Bev is, is spot on just in terms of each teacher program is looking at their students and trying to monitor their progress all year. We haven't done a whole, Kevin, like you suggested, an iReady comparison to, for students who have attended E S Y, to those who have not. I know that just in talking to Rosie, she is looking at like kind of further analysis on referrals for the, for the extended year program through special ed. The standard for recommendation is kind of broad. It's, you know, will the student experience substantial regression over the summer months? It's kind of subjective. I know a lot of teachers will try to take data throughout the school year. They'll try to look at student performance after school vacations, breaks, and then kind of make that case. But like Bev also said, I think post-COVID too, there was a lot of, a lot of catch-up. So I'm, I'm not really surprised at the numbers for E S Y recommendations have gone up. But I think the data we collect to support the recommendation is really based on individual student goals. And those can be a math goal, a reading goal, a social emotional goal, life skills, depends on, on that particular student. So it's really more individualized. It, I'd, I'd also like to see, you know, the, the work that Estelle's doing through the academic component of the WOW program too. We've really tried to align that more to our general ed curriculum. So it's not, you know, disconnected. What the students are learning over the summer is connected to their general ed curriculum. So that, that might be a good place to look too, just to see, to kind of follow those students who have participated. I don't know if that helps.
Yep.
Yeah, thank you, Beverly and Kara. Thank you.
Yep.
I would just like to say, I, I know sort of of the summer program, I've seen it grow over the past, you know, four or five years just to encompass more students, more families in Wakefield. And I know a few that sort of take advantage. And I think the way that you do sort of, it just gets better the way that you're able to sort of, I don't just want to say make learning fun because it sounds like it's a, it's a sticker somewhere, but it's, you, you do the real work, but then you also have a way to sort of be able to sort of take the edge off. And so I think it's a much less stressful environment than sort of their typical day during the school year. You know, just sitting in the class with, you know, 20 other peers. So it's great that you make that accessible to them and also just hit so many sort of points for, for the families. There's a multitude of supports that are in there. It's not just that the kids spend the day at the school. It's, it's also additional supports for the families, especially in the EL space. And one thing that always strikes a chord for me is anytime, and I, I say it all the time. Anytime I see departments that are sort of working collaboratively to solve each other's problems and create connections, I'm, I just think that's fantastic. And, and you two do it sort of in spades. And so it's great to see you sort of meet each other's needs and just kind of grow together and grow the program together. So just thank you for everything you, you do, that you've done. And I know it's, it's sort of probably hard to put into words, but I know that the kids appreciate it and their families. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you, Estelle. Thank you, Bev. I know you need to sign off. We'll see you tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I loved, I loved Bev's comment, sweeten the deal. See, they, they really do a nice job. They really do. So picking up on, on the agenda items under, under my header. So I'd, I'd like to move to the discussion that we had yesterday morning, Monday morning at 9:00 AM. We met with the middle school team to talk about the five instructional minutes that were added through contract negotiations. I can give a, a quick update to the committee and kind of present the information to you. And, and what we'd like for you to do is to take that information and ask us any questions that you may have. Deidre Santanado is, is joining us on the call in the event that there's any questions around transportation. But is that okay with the chair?
Yeah, that would be great. Thank you.
Great. Ian, can, can you bring up the spreadsheet that I shared? There we go. Can everybody see that? There we go.
Yep.
There we go. So what is highlighted, we have the current schedule at the top of the spreadsheet. And then what's, what we're proposing at, in the middle of the spreadsheet, right? And so through contract negotiations, we've added five instructional minutes at all levels, elementary, middle and high. And what that resulted in is five minutes being added at the end of the day for elementary and for the high school. I, I thought that we, you know, I thought that most people would, I thought that people would add it to the end of the day across the board. The, the middle school team met and they really felt strongly like the, the best kind of place to put the instructional minutes was at the beginning of the day. The instruction actually starts, it's, the minutes are spaced throughout the first five periods. But what they're, what they're proposing is that the bell go off at the same time that it always does. So if you're a middle school student, what has been kind of standard is the bell is that rings at 7:40. You have from 7:40 to 7:50 to get your stuff together and get to homeroom. And so at seven, that you're in homeroom, it's 7:55, you leave homeroom and instruction starts. And so what the middle school proposed is that the bells still go off at 7:40. But instead of getting the 10 minutes, you get five minutes and they're going to start instruction. They're going to start teaching five minutes earlier during the day. We met with Deidre Santanado. We talked about, you know, that's going to be a change for us. It's going to be a change. So essentially what we have is the middle school starting a little bit earlier and the high school going a little bit later and the elementary school going a little bit later. That, so the, the challenge for us in regard to transportation and what you can see on the spreadsheet, it says the number of bus routes and then buses in the AM. So we use the same buses for high school and middle school, buses one through five. And so when we, anytime we make changes, it is kind of like a Sudoku effect. And so what we've looked at and what we've been able to ascertain is that on paper, it looks like it's going to work, right? And this is what the middle school team really feels strongly that they would like to try this year. We're going to kind of, so we're suggesting to, to school committee, we'd like to propose to you all that we think we can make this work. It's going to be a change. And we're going to kind of, you do this as a pilot and we'll revisit this in January to see how it's working. And we'll report back to the committee and just kind of keep you up to date all throughout, kind of the, both in, from January to spring. It's also going to coincide with the work of the Student Services Subcommittee that we're doing this year in putting together a task force or a group to really look at late start. And so, but that is a future, that will not be a change that we would make this year. That would be a change that we would propose to make next year, starting September 2025. Happy to answer any questions that anyone might have at this time.
Yep. Pete, go ahead.
And in terms of the busing, and this may be a Deidre question, do we think it will work out all right? With the middle school being off by the five minutes from the high school?
So, Deidre, can you hear?
I can hear.
Okay, great. I just don't see you. I don't, I don't.
That's okay.
So. Do you have that question?
Sure. Our concern is that it's a five minute, the spell still got to ring at 7:40. But our buses right now basically have until 7:50, if in fact they need that time. But that reduces that time to five more minutes. Typically, the buses do arrive around 7:35. But we all know how traffic is, congestion, how it's increased over the past year or so, weather-related detours. So it does concern me that it's not going to be just a couple of kids that could be late for school. It could be 50 children that'll wait for school. That's.
And I have seen that in, in other schools. I mean, I, I think when that happens, usually the administration just says, we don't have these buses. We're going to hold homeroom for X amount of minutes. And, you know, I do agree, like you revisit in January and if it's working great and, you know, you say that, you know, this is a success. I, I do like the fact that, you know, I know they put a lot of work in at the middle school level to come to this idea and that they felt that five minutes was kind of wasted in the morning. So, you know, I do like that we've been able to accommodate their ask and give it a try and see if it works.
Thanks, Pete. Eileen?
My only concern is just because I was, I have been working very closely with the late start and the research behind later start times, especially in that adolescent age. And I know it's only five minutes, but starting that five minutes early with kiddos that need that extra sleep, I know those, it's hard enough waking up for the middle school time. It's, I know like my kids take the bus and it's 7:00 AM. They have to be on the bus. So that's already pretty early, an early start. And that's getting on the bus, not even getting up, having breakfast, doing all that stuff. So I know it's only five minutes, but it's just a, a, just with all the research that we've done for the past year plus about early start times, I'm just a little concerned. I guess I don't really have a question, but just wanted to voice that.
Yeah, I, I appreciate that. I, I know we've been talking about that for a while, sort of about the late start time. I think the way I looked at this was that this was sort of five minutes earlier than our current schedule as it exists, if we weren't talking about later starts. And I think it was something that sort of the, the educator group at the middle school asked, asked of us, sort of asked us if we could, if we could take a look at this as a pilot for this one year. I think we're doing that in the space of knowing that we're going to be looking holistically at all of the school start times. And so I think we're, we're going to see how this goes. But I think we could also get some information from this. We could use it sort of as a litmus test on how a, a schedule adjustment like this would affect the number of stakeholders that sort of we talk about in Student Services. There'll be a lot of people that sort of have, this will affect them differently. And I think sort of if we maybe sent out a questionnaire during the process, you know, what, what was this like for you? Deidre can give us some information on how that did impact the buses, you know? Yes, it looks good on paper, but what's the practice? So I think for that, sort of from the pilot perspective, and then maybe we actually get some, some data that we can use to inform our move forward. That, that would be my thought. And I think what that makes it, makes me a little bit more receptive sort of to it. If that makes sense. Kevin?
Just a question. Doug, I tried to read the, the spreadsheet, but it was coming up a little small. So what it sounds like is student, am I interpreting this right? That students are at, at the school at the same time, the difference is the five minutes is coming from homeroom. Rather than being 10 minutes, it's five minutes. And that's where the five minutes is coming from. So their arrival is the same as it's been. Is that, is that accurate?
That's accurate.
Okay. And they'll, they'll be dismissed at the same time. So it's the same, basically, it's just the.
Correct. Correct.
Okay. And then I've just heard, oh, go ahead, sorry.
No, go ahead, please.
No, I was going to change the topic. So go ahead.
And, and on the other side of that, the dismissal for high school and elementary, they've chosen to add their five minutes, you know, at the end of the day. So they'll get dismissed five minutes later.
Right, right. Okay. And then the only other thing is I've just heard two different things. Is the trial, is the pilot period one year or is it going to be looked at in the new year? Is it six months? Is it one semester?
I, I think we're going to report back in January. I, and you know, I think that's the plan. And so just to kind of give an update. And so, you know, what we're likely going to propose, based on the point that Eileen started to make and talk about, is we put together a task force. One of the things that we've talked about is just really what the research shows around the need for additional sleep for students, right? And so, and, and because our bus schedules are so interconnected and our, and our schedules are all kind of interconnected as well with our buses, the, the change in start times would likely affect all levels, right? So we're going to kind of put together a task group, look at this and really try to kind of talk through scenarios. What are the challenges and what are the, what are the pros, what are the cons, is what it amounts to. So, but you're, you're correct, Kevin, in, in your analysis around, technically it's not, kids are there, right? And so they're not technically starting earlier if they're present, right? I think one of the things that we talked about was, you know, sometime, some families need that 10 minutes, right? And that's going to be an adjustment. And that's something that we're going to need to learn about and find out about, right?
So when is a, like what is considered on time? Is it being at your first class? Is it being at homeroom?
So the, the homeroom bell currently is seven, at 7:50. The homeroom bell will be at 7:45. So technically, if you're later than that, you, you could be considered late, right? I'm imagining to start that they're going to need, you know, give people some space, right? And, and kind of, you know, work into this, right? But that's, it's kind of my working theory with this. You know, the, the other part of this and something that we learned with transportation is using the same buses that if, if we were to move the five minutes at the middle school to the end of the day, although it looks, it looks cleaner and like everyone's going to the end of the day. And initially I loved that idea that everyone would be doing the same thing, right? And so, but what that, what that has the potential to result in is buses getting to the elementary schools later than they have already been getting there. So, you know, if you're waiting in the afternoon for a bus, which sometimes students wait 10 or 15 minutes for a bus when their school day ends, if there's any delays, they could be delayed more. So the, the potential is that it might be more helpful to do it in the morning at the middle to get the buses there, either on the current time that we have or a little bit earlier. So it's, it's like a Sudoku problem, right? And when it takes time to kind of learn about this and, and understand that any change affects every other level and it affects the, the entire, the entire school and the entire district.
Thank you.
Of course.
Pete, did you have another question?
So, so my comment was the same as the one Kevin asked, but I'll just reiterate again that I appreciate the collaboration between the administration and, and the Galvin administration and staff to kind of come to a plan that may not have been what, what we were thinking of, but tries to see if we can make everyone happy in the process. So, and I, I appreciate, we'll give it a try.
Eileen, anything else? I thought I saw you with the hand up.
Well, I was just going to say, to be clear, time on learning does not refer to home, homeroom is not a part of time on learning, right?
Correct. Correct.
First period is really just starting a few minutes earlier. That's going to count towards that time on learning, correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct. So instead of starting at 7:55, we'll be starting instruction at 7:50.
Got it. Yep.
Okay.
So that's what we're proposing. If the school committee is in favor of moving forward, then we would appreciate your feedback or a motion to support.
Sure. I would move that, make a motion that we approve the adjusted school start and end times as presented. Motion's been made and seconded. Take a vote. Kevin Fontenella, go ahead.
Yeah, obviously, we'll go and update all of the handbooks and website and everything else and send out a correspondence with families, just so they're aware that all the, you know, the times are changing. I know it's kind of self-explanatory.
Correct. One of the reasons why we're kind of trying to move quickly on this is to do just that.
Okay, thank you.
Kevin Fontenella?
Yes.
Kevin Piscadlo?
Yes.
Pete Davis?
Yes.
Eileen Colleran?
Yes.
And Melissa Quinn?
Yes.
Thank you. And myself, yes. So that makes it unanimous. Thank you, Dr. Lyons.
Thank you for the support. My last item is, we're moving ahead to the committee a, a, a contract for Kara Morrow, our Assistant Superintendent. Kara is an exemplary, exemplary employee, an exemplary Assistant Superintendent. She's amazing. I don't want to embarrass her on this call, but you've all had an opportunity to see her contract. One of the, there's, one of the things that I appreciate or like most about the new contract that we're extending to her is that this is a five-year contract, which actually is, it kind of takes her out of cycle with some other administrators. And so, which is currently really the best practice. But it also kind of gives her some security as well with the work. But I can't say enough positive things about, about Kara, and I think you all know that.
Thank you. I believe everyone has had a look at the contract for about a month now, give or take. And I think we, I think we have a motion and then if we need to have a discussion, but. Mr. Fontenella, do you want to make the motion?
Sure. Move that the school committee approved the administration contract updates to the contract, the Assistant Superintendent as presented.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, is there a discussion? Pete?
Just want to give my thanks to Kara every time I've reached out to ask any questions or been a assistant, she's always super responsive and I do appreciate that. I know how hard she works behind the scenes, you know, a lot of the credit we give to our amazing superintendent. You know, Kara's there just right behind him, doing a lot of hard work to make a lot of that happen. So I just want to say thank you and that your hard work is appreciated and recognized.
Great.
Thank you.
Dr. Piscadlo?
Yeah, that was really well put, Pete. I'm, I'm very happy to support this contract extension. I too, over the last three years, have just noticed Kara, the great work that you do, the dedication you have, the hours you work, et cetera. And it, it doesn't go unappreciated. So when Doug kind of came forward and said, I'm thinking of a five-year contract, I definitely thought that that was a good idea because I think is, we can keep our, our team together and, and that certainly includes you, Kara. I think it's just the best for, for everybody involved, but particularly our district. So I just thank you for, for all your hard work. And I think this is a good contract and I look forward to supporting it and continuing to work with you.
Thank you.
That's great. Anyone else?
You can start, thank you. I just want to say thank you.
Yeah.
I, I love working in Wakefield. I think we've, we've done a lot of great work. I love our team. I'm, I'm really excited to stay on, so thank you all. Appreciate it.
Motion's been made and seconded. Mr. Fontenella?
Yes.
Dr. Piscadlo?
Yes.
Ms. Colleran?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Quinn?
Yes.
And I am a yes. That is unanimous. Thank you so much. Glad that you're sticking around.
Thank you, Mr. Angles, that's it for me.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to chair comments and action items, it's the feedback or, or a reading back on what we did for our retreat this past Saturday, I thought was pretty, I think it was a good Saturday. It was about four hours, took a break for lunch, thank goodness. It was kind of a working lunch. And just for those sort of who are watching or who didn't know, who weren't there, we had our MASC rep came and gave us a presentation at the Galvin Middle School, Alicia Mallon. She walked, she worked through, she actually sort of did her homework as, as was, was necessary. Sort of went through our policy book and our norms and protocols and sort of read it back to us. Every year we go through a superintendent review process, so she walked us through what those steps are. We didn't do that last year. We'll be doing it this year. And so with some new members and some that could even use some refreshers, we went through superintendent reviews, how that aligns with district goal setting, what we would be using for metrics, both tangible, intangible. And then, you know, how we, when we're evaluating superintendents or our superintendent, how we use a certain set of rubrics that we decide are important to the district and measure against those. And then how we complete and compile those, those reviews. And then, and then we went through and just talked about sort of our own, our own district goals as, as subcommittees and what we wanted to align with, with the district. Just for those who, who hadn't seen, I would read out maybe what some of our subcommittee goals are. I think our Policy and Communications Subcommittee will be looking over, again, continuing to work with the MASC policy hosting review. So the MASC will start to host our policy book. It won't just sit on our website, it'll be linked, be a live document, easier to update, easier to link to other places within our manuals, hopefully to find information easier for people who need access to it. We'd be looking at a CPAC policy, as we don't have one now, our Special Education Parent Association, and possibly also a LPAC, a, a language-based parental action committee. There's also a bullying policy that we would be potentially updating with the help of MASC and then looking at reviewing our field trip policies. As we've already heard, Student Services Subcommittee is going to be working on school start times and working to sort of collaborate with their, a, a number of stakeholders that sort of we identified. So sort of multi-tiered focus groups to have some conversations about stumbling blocks, talking to previous districts that have already tried to do this, what worked well for them, maybe where they found some, some issues. Also, there was some, some talk about executive functioning surveys that had gone out and how we have sort of some of that data, can we action some of that? And then we also talked about lad programming and how we could align it across the, the elementary schools. Is there a way that we could sort of collaborate? Seems like PTOs do allow to bring some additional programming into schools, but it's not always equal across. So is there any way that we can sort of work to help that, those groups kind of collaborate better for an equitable experience for kind of all of the students? Labor on Personnel was contracts and Labor Management Relations. Finance and Facilities is obviously the fiscal year twenty-five. And then we talked about a look ahead idea, a schedule where we would look ahead for fiscal years twenty-six through twenty-eight and create a long view and what to expect from that. And then we talked about sort of the, the financial implications of, of the high school and how we need to stay up to date on that. And talked about maybe having some more, finding a cadence to have some of the, the general contractor come before the school committee bond and see if we can get some regular updates on how the, the construction is progressing. So all seem like sort of worthy goals and things that we could sort of work on. And, and that was, I, I thought it was, I thought it was a good, a good take. I thought there were a lot of good new questions. I thought even some of the members that have been on the board for a while still had some good questions and, and scared the, the conversation in a good way. And my appreciation went out to MASC because I think they facilitated a good conversation, which was good. So. I know that was a lot, but that was, that was kind of all I had for my updates. If there was anything anybody wanted to sort of bring up from, from that, we want to discuss. Yep, Pete?
I'll echo your appreciation. Every time MASC comes out, I, I feel like I learn a lot. It's great to have their expertise kind of guiding us because there's a lot of knowledge that as school committee members, we just simply don't have and have to, you know, kind of learn on the job. And I'll add that the rich material that was presented to us on those two topics are included in the packet. So anyone who wants to see the material for those two sections, the superintendent items, and I forget what the other one was off the top of my head, but both of those are all in this existing school committee packets. You can take a look at the packet online on the Wakefield Public School site and see all the material that was in that, those two presentations.
Thank you. Yeah, we also went through our norms and protocols, kind of line by line. That's why I don't think we do that together as a group that often. So it was a good opportunity to sort of get everyone's take on it. So that felt constructive.
You know, and I'll, I'll put a thank you to you, Stephen. We were understaffed for this event, so you also run and grab our food too. So that would probably add about a half an hour to lunch as we, you know, you need to run out and grab food for people. Appreciate your, your hard work to do all that running around for us.
Glad to do it. All right. If there's nothing else, I'll move on to budget items, which I think we just have gifts and I don't think there are any. No? Okay. And then any subcommittee reports? Yeah, Pete?
So the Policy and Communications Subcommittee last met on July eleventh. You mentioned many of the topics a few minutes ago that we talked about, but I'll just recap them for those who aren't looking at the minutes in the packet. We talked about some additional feedback we had received from a community member on the religious accommodation policy. We chose at this point in time to not make any additional policy changes based on that feedback we had received. We continued to discuss the field trip policy nine oh four E with a lens on a few different topics. One of them was what is the experience like for those who are not going on overnight trips, both in terms of the material that they'll have during that time as well as communication? Also, we discussed things that have to do with like cost and how that can exclude certain members of our community from potentially participating in, in these trips and what we could potentially do or not do to help in those areas. And where we left it is, I did work on some edits, but as we're going through the policy book and transition to MASC, they do have two policies that cover both field trips and overnight field trips. And so what I'm actively doing is working to review those two policies and see if we need to make any changes to them based on the feedback we had or whether we can accept those policies as is and look at those in a future meeting. So I plan to bring that back to a subsequent meeting. And then we talked about our policy book and we are reviewing section by section. We have a handful of sections left to get to the point where we can host it at the MASC website, as you said, Stephen, which will make it much more accessible from a searchability perspective and hopefully complete in terms of policies. And we have an action item for members of the Subcommittee to send Dr. Lyons any feedback on Section D by the end of the day tomorrow. And then he and I will work together to come up with a proposal back to the Subcommittee. And hopefully we'll have something back for the main committee to review. Not in the next meeting, but maybe one or two meetings out for approval. And then I think those were the main things. We do have some future agenda items, but I won't bother to go through all those now.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Finance and Facilities, I know Mr. Markham isn't here.
We, we have not, because I'm on that Subcommittee and I haven't been invited, so.
Gotcha. Dr. Piscadlo, Labor on Personnel, anything to report?
No, we two haven't met since our last meeting. We're going to schedule something when Mr. Markham gets back, so probably sometime mid-August.
Great, thank you. Ms. Colleran? Student Services? No, no worries.
A new button. Yeah, so we discussed the task force and put a final list together of, of, of what, who we need in there. And then for members of staff and community and stuff, we will be, you know, putting it out there. We will be meeting again, I believe at the end of August. We're still finalizing a few things because we will be having a superintendent who has been through this come to our meeting. So we're just finalizing that person's schedule so that we can accommodate that timing. And so a lot of exciting things when it comes to the start times. And then, as you had mentioned in the retreat, we had discussed some goals. So we, we will probably discuss an agenda item for the next one will probably be to discuss the executive functioning. So, and, and what, if anything, we can possibly do and help out with our Subcommittee. So lots of exciting stuff.
Okay, thank you. Any liaison reports? I don't know if anyone else meets during the summer.
I was going to say CPAC hasn't met, so.
Go ahead, Kevin?
Yeah, so I missed the last Environmental Sustainability Committee meeting because we had an executive session on the same night. But I did reach out and one question that was asked of me was if we could, and I, and I brought this up with Dr. Lyons, if we could communicate with the parents in the community about the, basically buses to make sure that we have as many kids enrolled on buses, both for traffic reasons, but also for environmental reasons. Dr. Lyons said that, is that, that basically there's a quota, a hard cap on how many students, you know, could fit on the buses that are available to us. And then obviously that's in flux, so we'll just get an update on that, you know, in a few weeks. And, and they also had a retreat, not a retreat, it was kind of a get-together party thing on Sunday, which I could not go to because I was in Maine. I don't know why I brought this up to this committee, but, but yeah, they met and I guess they had fun. So that's it.
That's great. Future dates and agenda items, our next meeting will be a week from today, August sixth at seven. One thing I was thinking under that, the future agenda items, I'm starting to think that we can maybe shrink that list of future agenda items if we just sort of take a few of them and put them in perhaps the subcommittees where they might reside. I don't necessarily think we need a late start update in that list. I think that just goes back to Student Services. Admin goals update will keep, but maybe the newly reviewed sections of the policy book, that can go back to policy. And the facilities updates can stick with facilities. I would think that if there is an update warranted, those groups can just kind of reach out sort of as necessary. And then I did have one question because I don't know how it ended up on the agenda item list. And maybe, Dr. Lyons, you know, what, what were you thinking with an AI update?
Just wanted to share with the committee, just, you know, where, what it looks like, you know, what access kids have, how, you know, and, and maybe invite one of our English teachers or a couple of our English teachers to maybe talk about it. You know, I think just to kind of keep not only the committee, but the public aware of what it is, right? Because it's a, it's a kind of a ubiquitous word now or a phrase that's used. AI is, AI is assisting everything, supporting everything. But what is it, what does it look like in regard to student access? How are students using it, how are teachers using it? What does it look like? And so it was really just informational, that's why it's there.
Okay. So sort of its impact on learning and, yeah.
Go ahead, Kara.
One of our, one of our summer projects, we had a couple of our curriculum coordinators working on trying to provide a, a guidance doc of sorts for teachers just and, and students, just related to AI, you know, how it can be used well, what to look for, how to scan for, like that kind of thing. We're trying to, because teachers are learning more and more every day with what they're seeing in the classroom and the interactions they're having with students. So just trying to, just.
So just trying to, um, just formulate some guidance around it too, so we can even provide, um, an update from that summer project as well.
Okay.
Did I mute that whole time or just at the end? Sorry, did you hear?
No, 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 I heard, no, we heard you, that was great. That's good, yeah, because to your, to your point, Dr. Lyons, I saw that and I was like, how big of a discussion is that? Because that's, that's very all-encompassing, that's a large umbrella, so that's good to know.
Yeah, I, I think the hope with, my hope would be that we could do an introduction and talk about it and share with the committee, but then also share as we learn more and as, as it becomes more a part of, um, educational system. We can talk more openly about it.
Great, okay, I'll leave that one on. Okay, um, item eleven, any school committee comments? This was not a two-hour meeting, we had extra time, if anyone wanted to just, you know, go on the monologue. No? Okay. All right. Do we have a motion to adjourn? Sorry, I got disconnected.
Kevin doesn't want to leave.
Yeah.
I could do it if you want.
Move that the school committee adjourns meeting Tuesday, July thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Mr. Fontenella?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Piscadlo?
Yes.
Ms. Collin?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Quinn?
Yes.
All right. Meeting is adjourned, thank you, everyone. And we'll see you in a week.
Thanks, everybody.